I didn't look at it until.
Jack, you've come back. You're seated right here.
Oh, it's hot.
Nope. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have my gavel. So just pretend I do. Um, so we're going to the minute. We are on either number four of our agenda. Uh, minutes, including minutes from the May twenty fifth meeting. So move.
Seven.
Second to time out. Is there any discussion? Jake on the minutes. All right, all those. Okay, a proven sign, treasure, more number six. So move. Second, second to time out. And all of the papers. Okay, see no communication. We can turn the floor. So please, one of the, please raise your hand, one at a time. And I'll do my best, you know, if I don't see you start waving your hand or. Uh, yes, and you try to keep a brief note, two or three minutes, please.
Yeah. But anyway, I'm here tonight because I live out on P four O and I'm here now. Because of the situation up my way. The uh. Cars go like hell by my place. Sixty, seventy miles an hour. And there's just a handful of people, there's three or four people that do it. I I guess well now I can tell by the sound of their vehicle in the damn bar. And then the other thing is. Now, I'd like to feel comfortable with my grandkids to go out, ride their bike to school. I don't feel comfortable. I'm nervous as hell if the boys ride their bikes to school. Because you don't know who's out there driving either drinking or on drugs or both. And it's really, really nerve wracking. The the kids should be able to ride their bike. And not with no fear of after hitting a ditch. Because of oncoming cars coming like hell. And uh, and then my neighbors down the road. Are another situation, which we're all familiar with, the blackened crowd. Last night they had a big whole whole ride down there because the. Boy that got killed out here a year ago was a year anniversary. So. I had just come back from the school. I literally had to stop because there was actually a truck. On the town pavement. Burning the shit out of the road. You couldn't see. I had to stop until they got done doing what they were doing so I could get by. Uh, that's a, that's a big problem. I feel like. If you. Damage somebody's property, you should be responsible for it. That that bunch down there does it constant, they're constantly tearing the goddamn road up, which is town property. And nothing's being done about it. And my question is, you guys, I know you guys are aware of this situation, but do you have some sort of a plan? Because obviously the plan that you got now is not work.
Well, yeah, in all honesty. No, I mean, we don't have a solution. We've been discussing law enforcement, obviously. Even before, you know, what happened last June. You know, it's been a. Pretty was a pretty regular item on our agenda and. Unfortunately, we're very short of solutions. I mean, and I know and I understand, I know, I know what you're speaking about.
It's not getting any better.
I I I'm aware of that, but we just. We we uh, we constantly ask Knox County for more coverage. They tell us they don't have the manpower. Uh, we, we hear you and we agree with you. I know that people drive, I know people drive way too fast past here. I said not just past your house, but a lot of other places too. And I all also know because I saw on social media. Last night. All the uh, burning rubber that was occurring right next door to you and.
They've got the dash and they put it on Facebook. So I couldn't see, so see what I'm doing.
That might not be audacity, that might be foolish, you know.
Well, I think it's not foolish.
But you know, we, you know, perhaps now that we do have such a public record of it. We can pursue at least that aspect about property damage to the road, perhaps. I'm not, I can't, I'm not promising them, I'm spitballing.
As far as I know, there's no speed limit sign.
There is, and the state sets, you know, basic. Even if a speed limit sign doesn't exist.
They don't pay no attention to it anyway. So I mean, uh. But you know, I'm a, I'm a pretty even keel man, you know, I can get little rag goonies. You know, situation occurs and I'm really. I'm really not opposed to defusing the situation. If it if it involves a situation at my house and I know that if I call the law, nothing's gonna happen. I don't want to go that route. That's why I'm here asking. For assistance here. But you know. For whatever reason, if something happens. Then I don't have a problem defusing the situation. Well, at all, at all, it's lost, I mean, if we got no police protection. I'm gonna protect my family and there's nobody you can call and nobody will come. I'm gonna take care of the situation. I hope it don't come next, I don't want to get polished shit over it, but. I'm not saying that's off the table.
All right, well, thank you, and we will. Discuss this, you know, later on, you know, under reported members, for example. Later on tonight, but yeah, we will discuss this, you know. Further, thank you.
I mean, a couple of weeks ago, there was a vehicle down, down my road, no doors on. An old truck, an old beat up truck, loud exhaust, no, you know it ain't inspectable or registered. It's not fair, it's not fair for the people that tried trying to.
All right, I I understand, but I think.
Well, no, I'm trying to get my point across.
Well, I think you. You know, you have given us, you know, a lot of information. Thank you.
Just like I said, I was thinking, I was here about two years ago when Martha Conway. Had the same complaint in front of Vinyl Haven Fuel. And nothing ever was done about it. And I thought this was an issue when we, when the new cop was hired, that this was somehow gonna be addressed. What's happened with that?
It's been addressed by the new cop. The trouble is, the new pop is only here half a week.
So they know when he's not here?
I did, I tried to park at the person, you say, so far, you've got three days.
If we had someone here seven days a week, I think the issue would.
Yeah, you you like, we won't ever eliminate such a problem, but you could certainly eliminate it.
And we've been talking about alternatives for a long, for years and years and years. And and one of the alternatives has been. Our own private police force, but that has proved to be so expensive that. It didn't seem worth presenting it to the town, it was so expensive. And the best option is to get full coverage from Knox County, but we haven't enough, unable to do that yet.
And having our own police force would also run into the same personnel issue that Knox County's.
Police departments across the country are having a very difficult time hiring. You know, the past year has been pretty rough. And it'd be, it was going on before that too, but. If anybody else? I would know, you know, I'm just going to go on a whim here, I'm assuming what are here about broadband. It is an agenda item and we will be.
Eric, pardon me, do you want comments now during? Uh, speakers from the floor on broadband, or are you gonna allow us to speak?
Oh, I will, I will, I will, I will allow you to speak on the broadband. Come on the broadband section, I'm not going to put a gag rule on the floor.
Just making sure we didn't miss an opportunity, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, uh, we'll go on to committee and department reports and appointments, uh, planning, community developments, downtown project outreach.
Thanks, guys, I'm gonna try to share my screen, Andy.
Should be able to now.
Okay. Thank you. So just an update. The, the bottom bullet point is where I, where I should be at. I keep promising a summary for you guys to review before we. Publicize that, but just. That's still forthcoming, but just an update on where we're at with our funding and the scope of the project, so. I think since the last time we had an update. We submitted, we submitted another. Congressional, well, we submitted a congressional earmark, so the CDS congressionally directed spending. Um, also for one point two million, so the community projects funding and the congressionally directed spending are, those are the two earmarks, so. The first one, community projects is through Pingree's office and the CDS is through King's office and. Um, so we'll, we'll just keep our fingers crossed on, on those funds. EDA is still outstanding, but we did. Uh, respond to some inquiries that they had about our proposal, so that's still outstanding for around one point nine. And then we also still have our NBRC application out there for. Um, a million, so I just wanted to show the budget as it stands. Now and what the infrastructure projects look like. Um, with EDA funding, which is, I would say at this point. The most, the most promising, or at least the one that we'll hear about, uh, one way or the other first, so we're at. Three point, um, about three point eight million and this would be. EDA's match would. Um, match what we have. By fifty percent, so this is what we could do for a project with the EDA funding. So the three components, um, upgrade the stormwater, replace the. Uh, sewer components and the water main and do the sidewalks and uh, raising a slight raising of Main Street. So, um, yeah, just wanted to keep this um, in the forefront and then we'll let you know as soon as we. Have a little bit more information on. When, yeah, as soon as we hear about funding, um, but just in terms of outreach conversations, I know I've spoken with Eric and Sam about. Brent and I, um, speaking with the co-op board at their next board meeting. We did have a, Will and I did a quick meeting with Water District. So excuse me, not Water District Pam, um, Main Water of folks yesterday, and we are gonna loop Pam in and have. Another, uh, Water District meeting. Next month, um, around the water main component, so. The point is that we're starting to talk planning, um, and we'll start to talk broader community outreach and stakeholder outreach, so we can have. These conversations with the stakeholders and then the broader community, so. That is where that's at, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hey, um, all kind of broadband task force, so we received. Two letters, I believe, one from Jania and one from Dave. So obviously, we had a public hearing. Just last Thursday. We have two letters here, one from Dave and one from Jania. That both are asking that we do not disband the committee. And that, that's, I think that's Gates. Letter and then one from Jania. Stating that we should, uh. In light of what the survey results were for the broadband. You know, we should think about moving forward and if not, you know, consider other options, but not, you know, disband the committee. So is there any reason, Andy, why we can't add the broadband right into the, into this? That's okay, okay, great, I I, because I'm not sure with the, I wonder new businesses, but. So, you know. To be perfectly frank, you know, yeah, the public hearing, you know. More than ninety percent of everyone who spoke was opposed to it and opposed to it. You know, very forcefully, in my opinion, and you know. I think it's probably time that we think about moving on, you know, where, you know, we can't continue to spend a lot of staff time. On a project that, you know, the community. From many indications I can see are not that interested in. I don't know if I agree, Jania, and that is a vocal minority. I mean, my, I've even spoken with several people. Who originally voted yes on the survey and later changed their mind. You know, they, they began thinking about the risks that the town would take. By owning so much capital, you know. But I'm gonna ask the rest of the board now to say what they think.
I agree with you, Eric, then. Well, we, you know, from the hearing of the other night, it seemed. There are many concerns, I think we really need to be careful moving forward because we do have an awful lot of. Projects that are coming up, that are gonna be. Need to do, um, transfer station, just one of them. We've got a lot of money going out, capital projects that we're paying for, we've got. Road repair. And. It's not that I disagree that we don't, that people don't want it or need the broadband, because I understand a lot of people do work. And they need to have that type of. Power or whatever you want to call it, internet speed to do their work, but. In, in my mind, I don't feel. That it would be right to move forward at this time. I, I really think the. We've got an awful lot on our plate and I think we need to be careful.
So. With that in mind, Phil and Dorothy still haven't said anything, but uh, but uh. With that in mind, you know, that means that, you know, we need to. Make a decision about, you know, we have, we have a town, official town committee one and a town committee that, you know, will demand, if it remains. A committee will demand a lot of staff time. So we, you know, and if a community support for this project is not there, then it's also not responsible in my mind. In the upcoming year to. Spend staff time on a committee that, you know, is proposing a project that the community doesn't. You know, have an interest in right now. You know, I thought, you know, I'm, you know, I think if the committee is going to exist, then it needs staff time. Otherwise, it's, you know, we're. For a long time, we had a lot of committees that never had staffing, you know, from. Town government side, and it meant that, you know, they were oftentimes stuck in the mud. You know, they needed some professional help, so that's what we, over the past couple of years, like Gabe and Andy and Matt. Or that matter, sorry, you know, uh, you know, spending time with the broadband committee, helping them move forward. If the community is not interested in this proposal, then I think, you know. Repeating myself, it would be irresponsible to continue. Continue spending staff time when we have so many other capital projects. You know, coming up that they need to spend time on.
Free up that time, you know, all those things, they're gonna increase taxes too, right? That was the main message from that meeting, they don't want taxes to go, nobody wants their taxes to go up. So how are we gonna invest in those other things? I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't disband or that we should not.
Well, the committee can still be a committee, it's just that they wouldn't have.
Staff hours.
The staff hours, you know, the. So, Jania, do you agree with that assessment? I mean, you could still have your.
I sound my end.
You know, and I, I would also like to, you know, thank the broadband committee, you know. I know that what they hear, what they heard on Thursday night and what they're hearing tonight is not what they want to hear. But, you know, and BW and I both, you know, became members of that committee late, but much later on in the process. And by that matter, I was not a very active member. On the committee, you know, I had enough, you know, I had other time commitments, unfortunately, but. You know, thank you for the work you did over the past several years. You know, you showed commitment to a project and you researched it well and, but at this point in time. You know, I think we've reached a dead end, so Banner, I thought your hand first and then Danny.
Firstly, I'm in favor of the idea of. The island having local control over this kind of thing, but that being said. I under, I do understand you setting it aside, wanting to set it aside because of. In impracticality, financial or political, but. Uh, I think a lot's changing in this world. As far as broadband goes, and so I think there's a decent chance that a year from now. We may be back looking for a solution again. Uh, or, and opinions may change over the course of the year, just because it's a. Um, if the island sees money's unavailable, money that's being thrown at this subject. The town's not able to get for some reason, the town may change its mind, so if there's a way of tabling it as opposed to disbanding your committee. So that it might be able to be revived if things change. Like, good idea.
Uh, Dan, first and then, I know, I'm sorry, and I'm with.
Thank you.
Eric, I put my comments in writing and asked that they do be entered into the record.
Yeah, please, everybody. So. Uh, Dan, would you like to read?
Well, I mean. I'll summarize it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I do rise in opposition as perhaps one of the vocal minority. Uh, and my three bylines for tonight is the Buggy, Buggy Whip Factory, tax policy impacts and the role of local government. And as I said during the public hearing. The Apple iPhone was embedded sixteen years ago. How much has worldwide communications changed in the next sixteen years? I have a concern about if we stay with fiber, that we're gonna be equally elipsed. At the same time, I recognize the acute need for broadband in an isolated rural community. It's not just me, it's Maryland, it's Montana, it's lots of places. I'm an advocate of Starlink because I believe a lower orbit space based system has very, very strong appeal and will do nothing but continue to get better. Can I tell you what the price is, as Andrew and I discussed earlier today? No, do I suspect it will be significantly less than a five million dollar bond in business by town? Yes, so Eric, to your question of a moment ago, I actually wouldn't favor disbanding your committee. I simply say that they've heard that people aren't interested in the option that they've arrived at, despite their great research. And therefore, what are the other options as technology presents itself? That as a town, you have an ability better than we as individuals might have to order up alternative measures. I personally have already put into Starlink as a beta subscriber, I think my set's gonna show up sometime in September. Uh, maybe earlier. In the sheet I passed out, the very end of the Starlink sheet is the current map of service around the country. There's already a county in Maine that is subscribing, we should be part of that effort. And as I commented during the public hearing, recognizing we will have residents who will not be able or wish to put the antenna up themselves. There's a job creation opportunity from a town or for a company in the town. To start setting these things up, caring for them and maintaining them for citizens who can't do it themselves. But the costs we're talking about here, even if you take the five hundred dollar antenna. Add a three hundred dollar install charge, you do the whole island for under a million versus the five million that's being suggested for fiber to now. So I would close by saying, I'd rather not do this than Buggy Whip Factory. I'm interested in our still progressing with broadband. Uh, and then as my closing guideline is, if it's spending this kind of money, what are the other alternatives for? Housing, roads, infrastructure, we should pay attention to first, please. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, Jack, no, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
I'm not quite sure what happened. We did a survey and the results of that survey were very favorable. And then we had a meeting, which involved fewer people, and the results of that meeting were not very favorable. So we've kind of had one hit and one miss. It seems to make sense to me. Since we've come six years this far, to hold the referendum. And find out where people really stand, because the survey says people want it and the meeting the other night said people don't want it. If we do the referendum, then we at least give. More people a chance to say whether they do or don't want it.
Uh, Jack, and then.
Mark. Yeah, I'm concerned, as, as other people mentioned here, the debt service that the town is up against. And the ongoing projects that we have, even back when I was on the board. We started to the side rock project and the Main Street project. And so far, we haven't really gotten an awful lot of funding for that. And with this broadband, with the amount of money that this is gonna cost the town. If this was a viable thing, there would be a private company offering this service. I mean, it, it, it would be so expensive to maintain for the few people that it would benefit. I mean, we already have broadband. And a lot of it is how, how big a package you buy from, from wherever, whether it's. Solidated or spectrum, I mean, there's all kinds of packaging. So I feel that the town really shouldn't even be involved in, in owning such a business. That's what it is, a business. We are a town. There, there's a difference between the two. So I, I feel that this is way off the map.
My name is Mark Tolett and I'm one of the people that Pam highlighted, it responded positively in the survey. And then listening to the, the arguments against this, I'd be one of the people who have changed my mind, and I think that. My primary reason for, for doing this is, you know, my life got dramatically better, I lived close enough to town, so. I was able to do my work from here all last summer, totally changed my life, didn't have to go into New York City, it was awesome. I went from four megabits, you know, per second to four hundred with, with spectrum, and I wish that everybody, including my friend Banner, who lives down at the end of. You know, a, a road that would be down a trunk line and someone could, could do that, and I'm generally in favor of, uh, of the town. You know, helping and providing something that's, that's, you know, a critical piece of infrastructure, uh, to, to everybody, so. I like the idea of that, but it, I think you, uh. I think it's a step in the wrong direction, uh, to tax everybody to, to do this, I think the technology will change, I think it's too much risk for the town, I think. Maintaining, uh, lines like that is getting way out over our skis, I think there's higher. Uh, priorities elsewhere in, um, you know, upgrading the infrastructure and that's really the essence of what, uh, the town should be doing. Uh, not to, and also, you'll end up. You know, if you did this, you would end up getting more assholes just like me who buy out a, a. You know, a, a traditional island family and then burn their house down and build McMansion and, and, you know, start doing high speed trading. From here and, you know, you're looking at, you're looking at, you know, a great example of what your next, you know, population would be if you go ahead and do this. And, you know, you're looking at, you're looking at, you know, a great example of what your next, you know, population would be if you go ahead and do this.
Thank you. I'm, I don't dare come.
Well, I do think, you know, as far as owning utilities, the town, we own the sewer, city sewer. And we don't have a lot of customers because we can't, you know, can't go out of town. And the people out of town do not pay for it. That's the, um, customers pay for it, it's expensive. Needs, we need already in the, um, what's eighteen years that it's been online. We, we're encountering maintenance issues that are gonna cost a lot of money. And knowing, luckily Maine Water is, um, uh, operation maintenance people and they're awesome, they do great work. But I can't see how we could possibly maintain that part of infrastructure. I mean, knowing how hard it is for us to keep the sewer going. I couldn't imagine adding another huge, um, utility onto the top of that. I'm really sorry, I mean, I know, and I do appreciate Jan, all the work he's done. It, it's been great and I agree, I don't, don't think you should just, we should disband, just change the way it's.
Uh, Phil.
What, what objection is there to a referendum, to going forward to the referendum? What objection is there to that from those of you who spoke against it?
Just the cost, start with.
Cost of the project or the cost, I mean, the referendum?
The referendum alone.
Cost of the referendum?
Yeah, I asked how much a referendum at, on average cost and, and I didn't get an answer, but it must be some mighty significant amount of money. And, and, and the, um, yeah, I, I appreciate the way, um, you guys seem to be going in this. And I, I'm glad you picked up on the vocal minority because I thought for a while after this memorandum, I was at a different meeting. I just think a lot of weight is being given to the survey too. Um, survey is, is a saying that you can get the desired results from any survey if you ask the right questions. This survey had one question about broadband. The rest was pretty much who lives where and where do you vote? And would this fly if we put it out there? And it's a lot easier to check a box off on a survey and put it back in the mail than it is to get together. I mean, I don't, I know I don't like being here, I didn't like being at the public hearing. It, it means a lot more for those people to go to the public hearing than it does a survey. And not only, you know, each individual that went, they also represent a family. So if you put this out to referendum, you're just gonna waste time and money. It's gonna go down, it's gonna go down big. And I think if you do decide to put it out to referendum, that you should add a question to it. And that question should be to disband the, um, committee if the referendum failed.
Sam, there was a comment or question on the chat there. Sam, I don't know if you want, you wanna ask that out loud or not?
Sorry, Andy, I wasn't planning on it, I thought you could maybe just read it. But just maybe I'm not thinking correctly in the process. But if it goes to a referendum vote, that means every registered voter gets to vote on this, right? But every registered voter isn't a taxpayer. So, I mean, it's very easy for someone who isn't, you know, gonna take the burden on their tax bill to vote, yes, I want this amazing broadband. So I feel like a referendum vote really is quite unfair in that respect. But maybe I'm misinterpreting the process.
I didn't pass in the questionnaire because I thought it was grossly inadequate detail. Um, and it wasn't, I, I couldn't make a decision because I didn't have enough detail. But what I'd like to say is broadband is gonna, is, uh, gonna be, uh, cheaper to provide in the village than outside of it. That's why Spectrum provides a hundred megabits in the village. And, and, and I thought about the sewer system, which is just the village, three hundred and sixty customs, the village. We pay solely for, the town doesn't pay for that, we pay for that sewer system. There wouldn't be a downstream if there wasn't a sewer system. But to have, to have, uh, the people in the village subsidize people from out in the Yonder, I think is unfair. One way to try to compensate that is to have the, the town take over the sewer system as part of the broadband project. And then we would be, then the, the people in the, uh, hinterland would help to subsidize the sewer system. So the sort, the people in the village would subsidize the broadband in the Yonder and the Yonder would help subsidize the sewer system for the people in the town. That, I'd like to see that as part of, is it true that no taxpayer dollars go towards the sewer system? It's all paid for by users.
Well, technically, the, the tax base helps pay for the twenty-three hundred dollar a year license for a discharge to go elsewhere. And, uh, of course, these buildings have sewer fees assessed to them as users that would then get assessed through the general taxation. But other than that, there's no.
Eight hundred thousand dollars a year. There's six hundred, there's, uh, three hundred and sixty people who have houses pay, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars a year for the sewer. People outside in the Yon don't pay anything. True, we do.
So what, what Andrew said was that the tax paid, taxpayers pay.
Pay for a sewer built like this building.
Twenty-three hundred dollars just for permits.
Yeah, but it's not true. No, no one outside the town doesn't pay.
Well, I agree.
It's a town, we do pay for it. Can I, can I, can I just say something and get this off my chest? I'm glad we had the public hearing because I was, the survey came out favorable and I was surprised. I wanted to hear from people because, yes, survey you can fill it out, you can, you can go online and fill out a bunch of it. So I didn't wanna go just solely on that. So I'm glad people showed up, they made it very clear, they made some very good points. I, I understand, I have reservations about too, about the whole project as well, even though I was in favor of it. It is a lot of money, I thought we could get some grant money, but that isn't guaranteed. So yes, committing all that capital is a big risk and I agree that we shouldn't be doing that right now. It's just disheartening to hear that people think we have fast internet speed for everyone available to them, when they don't. And those of us who do work from home, you're on your own. If you can't get faster than speed, well, you either move away or you quit your job. And honestly, I feel like that's a really big slap in the face. To me personally, that's just my opinion. Um, and that's, that's it, that's all I have to say.
Uh, Sean.
I would like to ask the board to go ahead and vote, um, to not put this referendum and have it on the board and to take no further action on this and let's move on.
Gabe has her hand up. Gabe?
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm wondering if the board has feedback on the memo that I submitted.
Have feedback.
She asked us to give them another year so they could explore non-taxpayer alternatives.
Well, I, I don't see the point, nobody wants that, it's, you know.
Uh, can I?
These are not a priority for the town, I, I just.
So, so the board identified economic development as a priority. And you said that broadband was the project you wanted to focus on because you felt broadband, universal broadband was an economic development solution for the island. So the solution that the committee came up with for universal broadband is not one that folks are in favor of. Um, at least, at least what we're hearing now, that, that's not the right solution. There are many, many other solutions as people in the meeting tonight have raised and people in the public hearing raised. Explore other solutions, research more things. What we're talking about is no one wants to put tax dollars behind this. You've already approved, and I know the town hasn't voted on it, but the budget committee and the select board have already approved ninety to a hundred hours of staff time going toward broadband in this coming year. So I, I would, I would say out of the fact that, you know, if we, if we just let it go, we're basically saying that that's no longer, that, that economic development priority is no longer, um, is no longer a priority. And I don't, I don't believe that just so quickly because the wrong solution was presented that we should just ditch the whole idea of universal broadband. Spectrum, I mean, Spectrum has, you know, wants to talk to us about a proposal. Consolidated wants to talk to us about a proposal. Investors, private investors might wanna form an LLC. I'm just thinking without facilitation of some solution, then nothing will happen. Unless, unless just some private investors come together and do it on their own, which is, which is possible. But just, just out of, you know, the fact that the committee has done so much work, we've gotten grant funding, we did a study. I mean, there's just a lot that has gone behind this and I'm, I, I'm a- a- all on board with this idea of like, this was the wrong solution. We should not use tax dollars to do this. But to just say we shouldn't do it all in terms of, we shouldn't at least explore and facilitate other options for the next year. I'm just, I just think that, that would, I don't know, just, it just doesn't feel right to me in terms of how can it no longer be a priority or part of the economic development solution for the island.
Phil and then John.
I think we've demonstrated that it's no longer a priority, but it certainly is still part of economic development and forecasting. And I can't imagine just abandoning all the work and investment that we've already put into this project without a- a- any further recourse. I'm, I'm all in favor of continuing the committee. We already, as Gabe said, have money and time budgeted. The notion that we wouldn't pursue alternatives, perhaps more innovative alternative, less expensive alternative is, you know, something, that's something I'm in favor of. I'm in favor of letting the committee con- continue to do its work.
Sean?
Yeah, I, hey, I showed up late, uh, I gotta comment on the irony of it of being made aware of this meeting via the internet in a place where now I have spectrum at a hundred megabits per second, where seven years ago, I basically had dial-up and, uh, that was earth. Yeah, and so I think that it, high internet speeds are, should be a main priority for the island. Um, and I can put it simply in that I think that we should reflect upon the average age in this room. Um, and who's being asked to make this decision here? And that I'm the youngest here, twenty-seven, rolling in. And I think that that says something, that there's a disconnect. And I think that three hundred and fifty-five people responding positively to the survey is a hell of a lot more than forty, no matter how vocal they are. I wasn't at the meeting because I was out the hall setting traps with Zach Jones. So I know there's two people who would support this, I apologize, I kept speaking for you. But he is a taxpayer and the predominant people who spoke on the survey in favor were taxpayers off island and north. And, you know, it, I don't see why we wouldn't want local control of the utility like this and why we wouldn't be willing to share the responsibility of this, to come together as a community to support something like this in the name of future development. I think that seeing what the national priorities are and that Shelley has been trying to get broadband funding for the state in general, I think that we really could be making a decision by disbanding right now to really walk away when a lot could be made available to us. And I would hate to see that happen just because young people in this community don't feel comfortable coming forward or don't feel invested enough in this community to come forward to town meetings and invest their time. And, you know, I don't speak for everyone, but I do feel that I've spoken to some young people in this community and, yeah, it's, you know, at some point, you gotta ask yourself, like, with property values going through the roof, it's like, and with seemingly nothing being invested from the community in terms of like civic things like this broadband stuff. It's like, what are we investing in, what are we sticking around for? There's a lot of young people who I think that if we don't invest in things like this, won't be here in five, ten years. And so I think it really, we need to make this a priority, things like this.
Okay, so now I'm going to speak. So there, you, everyone's right, there are other options. So both Spectrum and Consolidated have presented options to us and Spectrum's offer is brand spanking. I believe it arrived the day of the public hearing. And I have not ready, and I don't know if Andy and Gabe, if you've had time to unpack it yet. But, you know, those proposals would also still require tax dollars to be spent for them to build out the infrastructure. And we would then still lose out on, you know, the local control is my basic understanding of it. At least, you know, we don't have, but, you know, when I got on the broadband committee, I said I wanted, I wanted to be a member of the committee. So question could be answered over time. And I made it very clear, I think the record's been very clear, that right from the get-go, I've had serious reservations about the project. And I was shocked by the survey results because it didn't match, you know, what I was generally hearing, both from young and old people. There's plenty of young people that have told me that, man, that is, and they're much more tech savvy than I, than I am. So I asked them, please tell me how very bad this could go, you know, and so.
I would actually respond to the tech question.
Please, so the, we have so few subscribers, we have one hundred percent subscription rates and you have a major problem. You know, to be perfectly honest, the five million dollar number, that's not what really scares me. Because first of all, it's not likely, and even if it was only two hundred, at least when you get that amount and you sign a bond agreement for twenty years, you know exactly what that amount is for that period of time. You can, you can budget around that. The number that scares me is the yearly operating cost because you run into a problem before the project has developed enough time to develop a reserve fund. So, you know, in all honesty, no, I think it is time that, you know, and there are other options. You know, now that US Cellular has better cell reception for a great part of the island, you can get, you know, their internet service and Starlink is only getting better. And, and other satellite services, I'm not, I shouldn't endorse any one company, you know, I don't think that's fair. But, you know, there are other options that people can do on their own and doesn't involve the town spending tax dollars, doing it for them. So, you know, I'm at the point now of saying that we shouldn't be spending staff time in the upcoming year. I understand that we did budget it, but that's just because it's been budgeted, does not mean it needs to be spent. And, you know, you need to go into other projects or, you know, have money sitting in the general reserve at the end of the next fiscal year. Sometime, you know, June twenty-two, when that one will end. I know, yeah.
People should hand up as well.
Um, okay, I'm gonna go back to John and then Gabe.
Well, just with the tech thing, uh, so when the gentleman came out here, beginning of the year last year, and discussed about the thousand megabits per second via fiber optic cable, and really that realistically peaks out at around eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty. Um, that's still gonna outpace anything that wireless can do. Just because of the technical limitations, like actual laws of physics. You're never gonna be able to transmit information faster wirelessly than you are going to be through light, through a glass tube. So like Starlink and those ideas are great, but I personally think that especially as a community that does have one of the darkest skies still on the coast, it's a little ironic that we'd be advocating for something that's gonna go up there and blu-ray our night skies to the point where you can't take photos with like long exposure photos, but that's massive streets. I know that that like, okay, sounds fruity if you wanna take nice photos. At the same time, it really affects observation stuff, like that affects actual science that we actually do. And I think it's a little bit much to just sign stuff over to, you know, rich billionaires who don't think about this shit. Excuse me, um. So that really, it shows a certain degree of ignorance that this wireless solution is always presented when the actual technical limitations are such that it really is future-proof. Unless you're gonna send information through vacuum tubes, which would require infrastructure of such a futuristic kind that you don't have to worry about. Like this is in, for all intents and purposes, future-proof as you can get. In, for all intents and purposes, future-proof as you can get.
Okay, so I think we've heard, you know, a good spattering from the crowd. Oh, I'm sorry, Gabe. Thank you, Jake.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify and Patrick did um at the public hearing clarified for. Clarified this for us and this isn't necessarily also a solution that. The committee was in favor of and uh but just, just to clarify around. What Consolidated and Likely Spectrum would be wanting is not that we um. Pay for a bond through taxation, what they did on Long Island and Patrick pointed out at the hearing, um, this is also their. Model in New Hampshire is what happens is they they partner with the town to do a bond. But the fees that they charge for for subscribers is what pays for the bond, so it's not paid for. The infrastructure isn't paid for through taxation, so like on Long Island, for example, Long would get a municipal bond. To um fund the backbone and then that bond would be guaranteed through a contract to be paid for. By Consolidated through their user fees, now Long is a very small island, they they only have um. They would only have Consolidated, there's not competition, et cetera, but I just wanna point out that we, you know. Likely, you know, we have always talked about those types of public-private partnerships as not being. Things that we wanted to pursue because we didn't want uh tax dollars to be invested into private um. Companies and but just, just, just to be clear, they're all are non-tax solutions to those public-private partnerships.
You know, everything you've said made sense, but none of it was a persuasive argument against. Further exploration into essentially the unknown, there's so much. About financial development of this whole business that we don't know anything about and the notion that we would throw our hands up. And say, uh, forget it at this point. It just strikes me as. The wrong thing to do, I understand why we wouldn't go forward with this project in particular, but the notion that we wouldn't. Invest in further exploration of development, we can't even foresee at this point is.
I'm going to move the discussion with an actual motion, you know, which I probably should have done much earlier. We probably could have saved all, always gonna save some time here, but. I'm I'm not going to move that the broadband committee be disbanded, but I am going to move. That staff time spent um facilitating the broadband committee not be used. On till the board of selectmen reauthorizes them to do so. Was there a second to that motion?
Well, what's, oh, okay, um, second and then discuss.
No, well, no, now, actually, yeah. So the motion was that the broadband committee, you know, still exists, but that staff time. You know, will not be used, you know, until the board of selectmen, you know, reauthorizes that time at a later date. Votes to reauthorize. And it's been seconded by Pam, now discussion.
Uh, I would put a time limit on that, I wouldn't say in the future, I think we, if we are gonna vote. To reinstate the committee, we need to have a timeline on that, I don't wanna just go will and will and say, yeah, we'll do it at some point.
On, Phil.
I'm not in favor of that motion either, um. This committee hasn't wasted any money. They've done some great work and the notion that they might continue to do great work and spend the money. That's involved in staff time wisely is an appealing one, far as I'm concerned. DW said that one of the reasons we shouldn't um do this is because people aren't interested, now I understand. They're not interested in what's been presented to them now, but developments. So much about what is coming down the pike is unknown, I'm not willing to say. They're never gonna be interested in anything, so why move forward? I would say let this committee continue to investigate opportunities. That are more likely to sail and meet the satisfaction than the last one did.
What's the budget?
I mean, there's always gonna be something newer and better, I don't know, how are you gonna make these people waste their time on committees if no one wants to do that, but I mean.
That's, that's my point. People don't care about higher internet speeds out here, you're on your own for it, so there's no sense for us to waste any more time. Town taxpayers' dollars on it, so let's move forward.
There, you know, right now, you know, in the budget proposal for the upcoming year, beginning July one. That we've, you know, tentatively allocated a hundred staff hours. You know, a hundred staff hours is a significant amount of time that, you know, can go towards. Uh, you know, a lot of other projects in my opinion.
When you're talking about housing, I would think that that time could be more well-studied than that, I was in committee and Mary Terry. Sure they had on that, which is a bigger priority beyond people, I would think. Buying houses then is broadband in my opinion, but that's just how I feel.
I think it goes a bit hand in hand, one in the other. It's a bit. You know, you kinda need both, otherwise what's the appeal?
Okay, Ellen, I'm gonna, you're going to be the last comment from the floor, um, because I think we've discussed this, you know.
Thank you for the opportunity, it just seems that a lot of people entered the survey, whether residents or non-residents in favor of broadband island-wide. And because some people came to a public hearing and spoke against it, it seems unfair to so many people. Who entered the survey in a positive light to say that people aren't interested in it, I don't think it's fair, I think a lot of people are interested in it. If they've been at a hearing, they may too, may also have felt that there were some reservations and. And information that they hadn't known or considered before. But for some of you to say that people aren't interested in, I don't think it's accurate, I think people are interested, I think they do want broadband island-wide. And I really do think the committee should be authorized with some town assistance to continue to look at alternatives. It's really important for the community, for the, for the kids, for education, for telemedicine. It's important here and I just hope you don't disband the committee and the, the committee's done so much work, they put their heart and soul into this. I just think they, they deserve to continue.
Okay, you know, I will let Jen speak because she was the chairman of the, and she has spent so much time, so I couldn't possibly not give her.
Well, I just wanted to say a voice of reality here. If there is no staff time, there is no committee. Because the committee lasts some months is me and Gabe. We've been doing all the heavy lifting. The rest of the members of the committee are totally disengaged. Don't even come to Zoom meetings or respond to emails asking for comments, nothing. So if the staff is gone, I'm gone.
Okay, so I'm now going to call for a vote, again, the motion was to halt staff time. Uh, for the time being on the broadband committee. You, it, do you have, do you have?
Well, we, yeah, no, yeah, I just didn't like the fact that we didn't have a time limit on them.
I don't know if you wanna, I, I think it's wise not to have a time limit, you know. So all those in favor of that motion? Opposed? If that motion does pass, that means that staff time for the time being will not be used towards the broadband committee and. You know, we, we won't have to make a formal motion not to have a referendum vote unless somebody wants to make that motion on the board. But obviously, if we don't make a motion to have a referendum vote, there's not going to be a referendum. Okay, thank you very much for your discussion, you know, and for keeping your comments concise, clear, polite. I know it's obviously a very contentious issue, but.
Might as well take the committee out behind the shed and shoot it on the other side.
Well, thank you, John, uh, we'll go on to. We'll go on.
indefinite tabling.
Okay. John, John, John. You, this discussion, we are moving on now to the housing committee.
Seems pretty Trumpian.
So this back to Gabe? Or Matt?
Yeah, your, your board package, uh. With the assessment, uh, as it's been. So the assessment will consist of a another community survey, or surveys, um. Which will be targeted at year-round residents, you know, on the island and just collect some. Background information about them and also get some information on what specific barriers they feel they face in terms of. Getting access to sustainable, reliable, affordable, safe year-round housing. So that'll be a survey portion, that'll be anonymous, and then there'll also be uh. A stakeholder portion where Mary will be working, uh, looking to interview. You know, influential community members like, like word members or a co-op, um. And also different community members in general, uh, going a bit deeper on some of their. Landlords as well, and the, uh, you know, the goal, the assessment, the, kind of the report, the fall time. That will be presented to the board and that the committee will be able to get the information in the report to move forward with actually addressing some of these problems. I feel everybody's in agreement that housing is a problem, but this will help to, uh, help to kind of define the issue with a bit more exactness. And so you see the work back there via the draft of the survey and also list of, uh, the stakeholders, so you want feedback?
Do you need anything from us, like a motion to go ahead with the survey, is that what you're asking for? So the only, I, I would mean I'd wanna go through this very briefly, but under question number seven. Obviously, Vinyl Haven has a high percentage of self-employed individuals. And there are two, there'll be two different types of income that might be worth. So question number seven asks, what was your household's pre-tax income last year? You know, maybe a better question would be, what is, you know, you might ask two questions, what is your gross and then what is your net? You know, that was ranging, you know, you know, obviously those are very different numbers, pre-tax would be adjusted gross, but, yeah. Which I guess, you know, I suppose that is just fine now that I've talked myself through that and Dan let me know what I've right. Does anyone else have any thoughts, anything jumped up for them on the survey?
I'm just glad to see this get out the ground. Been a long time and the kind of. Oh, I'm stoked, I'm really glad to just get it out the ground.
I agree.
Yeah, we, uh, we'll sell it out online, also on paper, yeah, and we're not gonna send a copy out to every, you know, address on Vinyl Haven, that's just. Far too expensive, uh, digitally, uh.
So what are you doing, just registered voters?
Uh, not even a registered voter, so we're gonna have it, uh, hopefully distributed around town, you can pick it up, uh, hopefully, uh. Things like that, closet, library, town office, um, and also with advertisements in the wind and also hopefully.
So you wanna save the mail and cost time, yes. Well, okay, I, I'm always for saving money, but I would worry that maybe you don't get a ton of responses that way.
I said it's gonna be all along.
Yeah, okay, yeah, as long as we really blast, really blast it, you know, advertise that, I mean, Dan?
Question please, uh, and Sid, you're trying to target your island residents, but then you met at landlords, so. You do need to pick up people like me who is not an island resident, but is landlord on the island. I'm just gonna get it because I'm gonna volunteer to sell it out, or are you gonna try to target? No rental property owners and do you even know who those are?
I know who a lot of them are.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I'm betting we know that number.
I haven't considered you as one though. Oh, well, I.
Something in each step.
Now, yeah, and so the survey is specifically for year-round residents.
As it should be.
Yeah, and I don't know, the landlord portion would just be, uh, hopefully, um, having Mary speak with them while I'm on one. And, uh, you get a big clearer idea of, you know, having physical.
Well, I think, thank you very much, you know, for getting this going, you know, I'm excited, uh. I see I'm a, you know, person that you wanna interview.
Potentially.
I'd just like you to know that Barb, who joined the committee.
Oh, excellent.
Which spoke so eloquently about how we need affordable housing on the island, I'll go the next morning and invite her to join.
Well, that would take a motion by the board to, is there a vacancy on the board right now?
I'm not sure.
I thought that we didn't need to be authorized by the board because none of us were sworn in and I was told it wasn't necessary because.
We did form an official committee, we don't.
You're not, you don't sign an oath, but you are appointed by the board.
So we're not, I guess I got confused because I always had to sign something.
I, yeah, we had to ask Darling too, and you don't sign an oath anymore for all the committees, it's only if the committee has voting. Like the planning, planning board is sworn in and I can't remember what.
If, if there is, if there is a vacancy, I mean, Barb, I'm all, you know. You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll put it on our next agenda to hold on after we.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, but I don't.
No, I think that's.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Barb. No, we'll be, I, I'm not sure if there's a vacancy.
There are people who are not showing up for meetings.
If, if they are, if they are right now with members.
I can assure you that it's a vacancy, because I will just let one of them go.
No, you, you, you will not. You know, the board will. Well, we, we always like to set odd numbers first. So, all right, let's go on to road commissioner, Barb, you will be on the next meeting's agenda, you can obviously still attend the, any committee meetings and, you know. Be like a part of that discussion, road commissioner reports.
Um, I apologize for not forwarding those, um. Get another one, usually coming on Monday, so I just apologize for not forwarding that, um. Generally focused on, um, trying to move into the new building, um. Yeah, I think we've had a couple that have been out sick the last couple of days, but, um, that's, that's trying to be the main focus now that we've gotten the gravel roads to a point where they've been calcium chloride and. Grated at least once so far, um. You know, at a point where that's what we can do, I know they've been helping with Luke as well, trying to move culverts to the location and stay ahead of him cutting pavement. Um, that's been the focus of what they've been doing so far, Dan and I need to meet and talk about. Um, the positions, uh, job descriptions and to figure out what to post going forward for the fourth position. Um, you know, we're supposed to meet later this week after we've both had more time to review what we currently have for descriptions and whether we need to modify any of those. Um, and how best to move forward with the department.
What have they, I don't know, was it in the last meeting or was it back yet?
Uh, yeah, he, so he addressed the letter, the email to the board, uh, I don't know if any of the board members had responded.
I don't, I didn't really know how to respond, I mean, I thought that was kind of the way it was going to somebody who wanted to be on.
I didn't quite know how to respond either and I thought it would be an agenda tonight.
Yeah, I suggested to him that the, what he had brought up in the.
If, you know, if you, you know, if, you know, we can't hear you talking, it's all I ask, please. Yeah, you know, too many voices at once.
I had suggested to him that the, um, the proposal, the decision as to what, what we post or how we fill it would be between me and him. You know, and then not necessarily from, from the board directly, um, you know, perhaps it's. His and I opportunity to be able to figure out what's best to put forward, um, so I'm not sure. And we've talked about it and I think he on the same page and again, we're meeting this week to talk about it further. Um, in the meantime, we're trying to find, you know, intermittent, you know, part-time help at the very least, um, to help fill out the, the fourth position. Um, until we make a posting. I know one of the concerns he had was, you know, I guess taking a step back to look at what, what it is exactly, we're hoping to see, um, you know, with. You know, for the job description with what we're hoping to see filled, um, you know, and, and whether or not the current budget, what we budgeted affords that. Type of workmanship and, and experience or not, um, so again, something that we're continuing to look at.
Okay, yeah, so there is no old business, we have two items on the new business, um, to quickly, the first one is for. Five Star Street. So that's all they, uh.
Uh, so with the Star Street one, um. Make sure I got them right, I believe this one we are to. Exchange the payment for the, this was done before, you know, it's kind of a condition upon payment. Um, or upon receipt of payment, um, so I think that was the stipulation with that one, that it's an escrow, in that when they see the quick claim deed, they'll give us the payment.
I move, we sign the quick claim deed for five star street. Second budget. All of it. Okay, um, the quick claim deed for four, or four, our call out lane. I move, we sign the quick claim deed for four, our call out lane. Second, I pay him out, all in favor. Money coming into.
Yeah.
All right, so the, just so you're aware, we're asking the court, I believe. I get them all right, sometime in mid-July, we're looking for a court date on the eighty K action, um, that we're engaged in. Discussed in length earlier about the tax exempt status and abatement request updates. And those are all at varying stages in the courts to be reviewed still. Um, latest update was that the Knox County Superior Court remanded the consideration, reconsideration of. Um, scientific and literary exempt status or qualifications back to our assessor, so Wes will be preparing. Um, another, a third now, um, decision. On that. Um, should be on our radars to talk about strategic planning, um, following up on what you had worked on for a work plan last year, um, using some of those same. Same general goals or objectives to look at for FY twenty-two, um, you know, once the budget's approved to, to look at work plans and to help set some. You know, some better deadlines or expectations on certain things. Um, such as something I'd be thinking about, if you wanna, I don't know if you wanna have a separate workshop on that. In July, um, dedicated solely for that purpose, or if you wanna try and include it in a regular meeting.
I don't know if that's, you know, necessary, I mean, I think we're all well versed in what, you know, the capital projects of the future are, and we can, you know. And we could do it in a meeting or even two meetings, but, you know, the only thing we need to have, unless someone else disagrees with me on that, but I think that we can. Have, you know, we're, if, if we're not well versed in the capital projects, then we all should be removed from office immediately.
Yeah, for me, for me. For me, it's far more than the capital projects, in fact, actually, the capital projects in terms of an annual work plan are the least of my worries, um, you know, it's the every, you know, the every, you know, the more general. Things you expect and wanna see from committees and departments and making sure that, you know, we're meeting those goals, and that is clear to the staff what the goals of the board are to be met. Um, or they can continue to go along as they have always and, um, you know, just wait for feedback if there's something awry or wrong.
Think that the work we've been getting from our community recently has been quite good. You know, I think, I think I've made it in. It's all shade.
Okay. Uh, right, uh, the analyst director's position, um, I may have mentioned, uh, we had. Interviews, we had asked one of the candidates to come to the island. Um, you know, for, to be able to meet with some of the volunteers to tour the facility, look at the medical center. Um, we've been met with the director up there. We did not, um, offer the position to that person, um, so we're Pat, Mark and I continuing to work on, you know. What it is we're hoping to see filled, you know, if we can't find it to be a position that kind of. Complements what Mark does on the fire side of things, um, you know, how else might it look? Um, and so we're, we're continuing to be hopeful that we'll find something, um, but it hasn't, hasn't yielded a lot of positive response yet. Um, on the capital projects, the, um, the bridge, as you know, the guardrails were installed, uh. The community took it upon themselves to open the bridge, um, prior to our authorization, but that seemed, I mean, it's fine, it's, it's open, it's able to go. And they're gonna start, start dismantling the, um, temporary road. I'm still trying to finalize, um, how much material may, may be available, um, for us, um, out of that, or how much may have been spoken for or sold elsewhere. And that was part of the, the getting the price down to the point where it was off, you know, within what we authorized or had the authorization for. Was that a lot of that material was, you know, trucked here but not purchased, if it was, it wasn't ours, so that was one way to lower it, so if he anticipated selling it. That was one way that the material could get lowered, the cost of the project would be lowered. Um, but we have a need for, while it's here, if it's, if it can stay here, you know, that's material that could be used on road projects, on shoulder projects. Yep. Yeah, the boat launch up there will be restored, um, to a better condition than it was. Um, the public works facility, still waiting on the, uh, the electricians to be able to come back and finalize a few things, my understanding is they're short on staff. But also waiting on some materials or components of, I think, the pump for the fuel station and a few other things. Um, but we have started moving stuff in, um, and the engineers coming out Friday to do, have a walk through, hopefully with someone from the company. Um, to point out any last minute things that need to come back and deal with. Um, that is nearing, nearing completion. Um, mentioned that Commissioner Paulman had came, come out last week, uh, she talked with Mark, Pat and I. Um, just covered a wide, wide range of generally projects and concerns we have on the island, uh, as it related to things that the county might be able to spend the ARP funds on. Um, the commissioners had a meeting on Tuesday. Um, talking in more detail about it, mostly hearing from, um, two groups, main housing authority as well as the mid, uh, mid-coast broadband coalition, um, thanks, man. And so both of those entities are hopeful that the county will consider their, um, interests in helping solve some of the challenges in the mid-coast, um, there's been a lot of. People reaching out to the county commissioners and, and the administrator on, you know, please use it here, please spend it there, you know, we need this too. Um, so it, there's no, there are no position to decide anything right now, it's, you know, same as we are, we're waiting for the same final ruling on how exactly what the limitations are and what, how it can be spent exactly, it's. Still, you know, a lot more clarity, but still very, um, not fine at this point, so. Um, you know, we will continue to work with them, the commissioner is interested in coming back again, and to spend more time and to see more of our facilities. Um, presumably if it works to be able to meet with some of the board members, um, she's happy to come to a board meeting. Um, so just something to think about, um, as that time might allow for that. Already gone over housing challenges. To make sure I didn't have a question in there. Negative, um, Gabe had already talked about the grant funding, just, um, big update there is that we did apply with Senator King's office, um, for consideration for project funding. Um, with there as well, they had reached out to us to, to do so. And other than that, meeting for tomorrow with the, um, North Haven Select Board at five fifteen. Yeah, they have a regular meeting that'll start at five and sign their warrants and take care of their regular business before, but five fifteen, they said they, we should be fine, uh, join them. Um.
How are we gonna do?
Virtual.
Just coming here.
Your choice, if you wanna stay home and do it from home, or if you wanna come in and be around, um, the meeting hall, you can do that. Okay, um, main, main. What's that? Um, the main, the main, uh, topic for tomorrow, just be talking about the thoroughfare use and infrastructure needs that are up there for both sides, um. And then any possible, if you wanna have any future discussions, anything that you might wanna throw up there for anything in the future, I know Eric talked about the TIF before. And trying to talk, talk about that, um, you know, perhaps other things, I know Mark and Pat have been talking about, you know, training with first responders and mutual aid response. Um, you name it, probably a few things that could be in the future talked about, but just leaving it kind of open. Um, I was notified that it went in today. Had to have some repairs done to it before it went in and. Yeah, Everett was in today and said he hooked it up himself, so. It's there for the summer and presumably into September until the weather starts to turn to a point where, you know, it needs to be removed, but.
Which is the standard.
That's all I got.
So. The forty members, oh, start off, so I'll start off easy and then we'll get more difficult, uh. Couple of easy points, um, visibility concerns, one at kind of like bridge. If you're going up to the neck. There's a little bluff right, right before you get on the bridge, and there's a tree growing on that bluff that. You know, does limit visibility, you know, it's somewhat, you know, so you can see the hill, it's a small maple tree, I think. You know, if I could get it cut, cut down.
On the, on the town side of the bridge?
On the town side, yeah, going up towards it.
You did stop at the stop line that hasn't been painted quite yet, right?
Of course.
That's the intention.
I stop at all stop signs. And also at the Coke bottle, if you're at the yield sign, looking up over the hill there. Out towards State Beach, the grass has gotten tall enough that it's hard to see. If a car is coming, I had to give it to her to get out in front of somebody the other day.
In that triangle on the private property?
Yeah, like, you know, it's just, you know, I, I understand roadside mowing, obviously will become a thing as summer progresses, but this is just a real quick. Up there with a weed whacker essentially, you know.
I can reach out to the caretaker of the property if you'd like.
Okay, sure, or go up to town, it may be. Is it too far in maybe?
It's not that too far, generally, we don't generally. Go beyond the right of way generally. We put the rocks in there at one point, so folks weren't driving vehicles, ATVs through that intersection, you know. Going through the ditch and, you know, causing an issue with the ditch and drainage there, but beyond that, I think we may have cut down some trees in there in the past.
Yeah, we know, yeah, because it used to be a huge tree, but yeah, right now it's just this last, something to be done and great.
I'll at least confirm with the caretaker that it'd be okay.
So now let's go, speaking of that place up there, we have, we now own that piece of property, obviously. Up by the, some of that little graveyard there, where childcare was. Thinking about, what do we want to do with that property, this is a more broader question, I'm not for a decision tonight, but. You know, we, we now have this piece of property, you know, that we took, you know, for back taxes. You know, do we wanna put it on the market or unless somebody has a creative thought of what that land could be used for for public use? I don't, I'm not creative enough to think about that, but. The only thing, the only thing that would come to mind would be. Find some kind of cheap house to put on it for, you know, an angle director or cop or something, but that would probably cost way too much money.
I mean, that was. Well, that was the reason that it wasn't gonna work for the daycare, is that you can put a septic or you can put a house, but you're not gonna like gonna put both in there because of the stream protection that runs through there. I mean, to do a for sale sign like through, you know, just, we generally, we, we put things out to bid and, you know, through a closed bid process or sealed bid, you wanna do that and just see. That's usually how we've done that, otherwise direction on whether you wanna go with a real, I mean, I don't know that listing, it's the thing to do, I think, just a sealed bid. Uh, the warrant article gives the select board the ability to decide how you see fit, but, you know, with what it is, I think just a sealed bid on that would, would suffice. I don't think it's even a full acre.
Yeah, you, you know, your best bet would be, I, I don't matter wanting to complete, you know, there. That'd be your best bet. I said, put it up. We have to make a motion on that, put it up to pull it, and then set a date, will we do that next week or can we do it now?
You can make a motion now to put it out and off, you know, offer for sealed bids and.
But what are we usually do like a month or?
Uh, well, you'll meet, I mean, it's up to you, I mean, you can do two weeks and see what you get and have the reservation, you can put a minimum on there if you want.
What's going to be next to the twenty ninth?
Um, after the twenty ninth, but presumably it would be the thirteenth.
They are, we are thirteen. Say we put up to pull the bid and open the bids on the live deck, I make that one. After we make the money for the discussion. All in favor, all of that decision was made. Uh, that was easier than I thought, uh. Now, um, Phil, I, it's actually maybe your last meeting, but first of all, I'd like to thank you for not just these last two terms on the board, but, you know, you've been an active member of this community for. A lot of years, I wanna thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And talent, and, you know, you know, you've done a lot to elevate the conversation in the last six years. You know, on this board.
Oh.
Second, well, so, but also. On a practical level, going to point that I, co-chair will be losing you and will need a new co-chair. And so if someone, you guys should be thinking about that, and why will you think about that? As this is my final year and I am not running again, I will make that abundantly clear, if nominated, I will not run, if elected, I will not serve. Even though I couldn't stand in the Johnson, but. You know, so if. I've written up history, uh, if, you know, if somebody else, I, you want to elect me as chair for another, the last year, then I will take the position, but if somebody else wants to get their feet wet. You know, because there is, there, trust me, there is a learning curve, my first few meetings were rough. You know, if somebody else wants to take the position for that finally, I really not have a hard time. Taking a more secondary role on this board, I would admit, and I am, I am getting a little grumpy and.
A little.
But, you know, just then, you know, and obviously that will be until July, I'm gonna elect you chair, but. You know, just.
Think about it.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
That was way too much. I know. First time he's added anything, right?
I've got a couple of things, one, uh. Noah Hall officially notified me and maybe all of us that he wouldn't be painting the pile off this year. And I spoke to, um. Uh? No, I didn't speak to him, but no, I spoke to him. Suffice to say, I spoke to him. And they said that they would, uh, do it by, uh. By this fall. And so I have to get back to us with. A price, because now it'd be a shame, it's a shame already to see it deteriorating, and there are some. Physical repairs that need to be made to minor repairs, so we can expect to hear from.
This person.
Yeah. You know, on the right, when you just go, you get the granite out of them.
Dana Emmett.
Yeah, I just said that.
No, I didn't. All right, yeah, Dana, and, uh. The, did you all get the letter that I sent around?
Oh, yeah, I agree.
So are we on board with signing that?
What is the, I didn't, I think I read it entirely, but what's the call for, what's the call? Or what's it asking?
It was about the, it was about reverting to the old standby system.
Actually, I did have one change, if we go back to that system, the only change I would say is don't give out unlimited standbys right at the top, give out a number that you think can actually fill it, because if, if, if everyone has a standby, then what's the point of this?
Uh, I agree, and so do the other people who are on board with it, or forgot to include that.
But other than that, yeah.
This was under your, um, fair advisory or, no, what is it, the committee?
The fair advisory committee, no, it's not, it has nothing to do with that.
It's just you personally?
No, it was me and, and several other people, uh.
I read the email and I responded to it, but I didn't, no. I'm like you, I can't remember who it.
Uh, it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the fair advisory, it is the local one or the state.
Okay, that's what I was trying to.
But I intend to bring it to the state. Fair advisory board meeting.
Right.
Does it, um, perhaps, does it acknowledge the, uh, ferry services concerns for the staff? Going, okay. I saw. I saw, I tried to get into the Google Doc, I don't know if I had access yet. But I did, I did see the email, I'm not sure if I fully read.
I move that we sign the letter with the edit about, you know, suggesting, suggesting, suggesting a limit of standbys issued per day, per day. Per day. Oh, no, I mean, I just, you know, leave that up to them.
The way we had it drafted initially was let the first term people who are more familiar with how many standby.
Right.
Seven, right.
I didn't know if we wanted to try and send it on the letter.
They would, they would have a better idea of what, that's all I want to say.
I just have one question about the airport, is there any more about, I mean, where do we go, what do we do from our last discussion?
Well, I mean, we need funds to, you know, really go after it and to try and expand it. You know, frankly, with, I just haven't had the time to put towards it, it's just one of those things that's out there, and they haven't pushed for it to be expanded in the last two year now, so. It's, you know, it's on the list, but I haven't been able to make it a priority. Yeah.
I, I'd like to see it be a priority.
I, I would like us to come up with the work planning to make sure we can see where it fits in, and that, that's part of my challenge, is to making sure that we have time to do that.
I would just like to get back to what Jim was talking about earlier, I mean, I've called about things and never, we never get calls back from Knox County, I, I realize that they might not be here on certain days, but there there's resources for them to get out here, when it's happening in the daylight hours, it doesn't make sense that, one, if you give your name and phone number from at least the officer on duty not to call you back, or someone on duty, and two, for him to send someone over here, I mean, that's a pretty hard corner when you got, I mean, I totally agree with Jim, I, it's disgusting to see the road all torn up up there when, especially after they just paved it. I'm just as sick as Jim about all that, all that stuff going on up there, and, and speeding, I mean, I've heard from a lot of people, it's not just up the deep water road, keep the speed. And like Jim said, there are certain people that have probably been complained on that the cops should maybe, I mean, I don't know how we cannot.
Catch one of them, wasn't that?
Right.
There's just a handful of people on that road that speed, I mean, on a regular basis, I know them all, I know who they are. But I, I appreciate you commenting, Jake, and, uh, to me, it's a, it's a pretty important issue, so I really hope you guys.
I just.
I know you've got a lot on your plate, but I really hope that you jog this around your mind, and maybe somebody will come up with some, some way to kinda curb this a little bit, because it's, you know, it, it's got out of control.
I have a question, so, how, when do you notice that this happening, is it when the, when the deputy is off island?
Well, you know, I, it's like, I don't really know when he's here and when he ain't here, per se, but I assume that's probably happening a lot when he ain't here. But there's been times where I've seen a cop walk by my house, and five minutes later, there's a car coming down the road doing nine hundred ninety-nine miles an hour, I mean, I told, I, one of the cops a while back, I said, look, you know, you can set my damn driveway, you can set my driveway, I can tell you when these people are coming through. I says, you'll have them, they're doing seventy miles an hour. I, I think he sat there one time, but he didn't get anybody, but to me, it wouldn't be that hard to do, because there's three to four people that drive like hell.
I recently did, you said you drive with.
Oh, this is a while back, you know, Phil, months ago.
But it wasn't the current deputy that we have coming out.
No, it wasn't, it was like three, three people back, but he actually did set in my driveway, I said, you can back right up my driveway and set right there, I says, they'll be coming along about this time. And one of the guys, he's a fisherman, he comes down through there about five o'clock every morning. I don't even have to look out the window, I know who it is, and coming home in the afternoon, he's still doing, you know, he's doing all of fifty. If he's doing a mile, but I'd really, really like to see the traffic get.
So I'm all, I'm all with you, I was just gonna ask Andy if there's any word, have they had any movement on a second deputy out here or?
So I, it came up, and so I reached out today to the captain, following yesterday's inquiry about whether there was a deputy out on the island. And to see what kind of follow-up there was, so it was, I don't know if you see the Knox County report that came out again today, so there was, there was a motor vehicle complaint logged in there, so I did, it was a deputy from the mainland that it was assigned to, and so I did call to see what the disposition or what the follow-up on that was, you know, and did express that, you know, this is another one of the opportu, you know, I don't know, one of those times where, you know, we're told we're part of zone one, if the deputy isn't, the resident deputy from, from that time isn't here, that we're part of zone one, there'll be a response. You know, presumably, it, it has to get sergeant approval, and so they have to wait with other calls going on, or is there a reason to be able to send it out now, is there a imminent danger or threat, and so at the very least, you would expect a phone call to verify what, what was seen. Yesterday. So. Expressing that with the captain, I don't expect it to stop there, but, you know, I have been quiet about last night in particular, and did follow up with another deputy today, I was on the island.
But what I just saved, the video posted on social media of them, you know, I, I, I just saved the video, and speaking, speaking of unregistered, you know, vehicle, you know, I could tell, yes, I could tell you who the vehicle is, if it could be proved in court, that'd be another thing, obviously, but I'm, but now the video is saved, I know who posted it, we can, I have no problem handing that over to, or handing it to Andy to hand over to the deputy, but you know, that would be a first step, is that, you know, at least he can go up and.
And the thing of it is, you know, somebody said, what the hell are you concerned about with the blackings on your own bucket? I said, no, it's not, it is on the town paved road, they, they are staving up a town paved road.
They're also parking in the road too. People have to go around it all of a sudden, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, I had a little stop, there was so much smoke, and there was a truck ahead of me, and it was just, I mean, it was just loud, and so, I mean, anything in, anything to kinda curb it would be really good, and I've got two grandkids, I've got one that's thirteen, fifteen, they like to ride about the school. And I don't wanna get a call that one of them kids has been hit by some half with this going three times faster than he should be.
Right.
And I don't wanna go down that road, none, none of us do.
Well, thank you, I mean, yeah, thank you.
I lost a son thirty-three years ago, he got hit by a car, he was forty-five years old now. And, you know, I still have bad days about that, I think about that quite often, she was, he was actually riding a bicycle. And I think about that, my grandkids, you know, not thinking that, you know, I mean, I don't want something like this to happen to them, so.
I know it, don't I? Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not, you know, brushing it off, you know.
And I don't wanna get a mess, because, you know, I, I can take care of myself if I have to, and I can't easily situation, but the bottom line is, if I do it on my own, I'm the one that's gonna be getting in trouble, and punks are still gonna be outraged and hell.
Okay, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Same subject, last night, all day yesterday, everybody knew about the anniversary, and they knew things were gonna take, was there a deputy on the island last night?
No.
Even though, Vance warning, knowing that they were gonna be doing this?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think Knox County, I don't think it crossed their mind that this was a one-year anniversary of that affair.
It was on Facebook, and the sheriff's department is on Facebook. I see him posting pictures on there every day of who's removed to a lieutenant, and who's doing this, and who's doing that, they're saying what's on your Facebook.
Okay, I can tell you that on those three or four days every week when the deputy has been here, the noise and the reckless driving has been significantly diminished than it picked up, just as soon as this guy parked at the ferry dock. So, my point being, when there's a deputy here, things are better.
We need two deputies.
Unfortunately, we can't make one the turtle, as I say, probably are.
Be any way to stagger their shifts, or his shift, and maybe have the car left down there when you're not going?
Yeah, we've talked about that.
I talked about leaving the car right at the cottage where you're renting, and I'll give a rock down.
No, but, but I think what Patrick is saying, having to leave the park of fairs, everyone thinks he's actually gone, but he can actually be on the island somewhere.
Yeah, we've talked, we've talked about that, and I mean it.
You know, and I just wanna say about you, like, these people aren't even smart enough to do it down the road. So it looks like it's in front of somebody else's house, so that's what you're dealing with mentality wise, so, I mean.
One of the people I'm dealing with is, well, in my opinion, he's a, he's a half.
Is there anything else under forty members, I move we adjourn, second by Donald, all those in favor, thank you all for coming.